You are watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM daily. Visit us often on the web at www allaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions, and of course we have our updated schedule there, or feel free to call us at (354) 2295.
These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting, and good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer, unplug just a little bit, and head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena, located on the Sunrise shore of Michigan, only a few hours' drive, but miles away from the weight of the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay, where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse, or the masts that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena, a haven from the world that's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, January 20th, 2014. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also had the opportunity to read minutes of special session, January 2nd, 2014, regular session, January 6th, 2014, and closed session, January 6th, 2014. Any changes? Modifications to the agenda, I have one I'd like to present to council if you would agree to add, discussion of EMT services at the Snowcross as, I guess, B of 13 new business. There's a representative from the Snowcross is going to give a quick citizen's description of that, so I just wanted to give the council an opportunity to discuss it at this meeting if possible. Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
I'd also ask to add, as item 13C, an introduction of the water sewer rate FAQ.
So Sean moved and do we have a second? Second, okay. Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, any others? Okay, citizens, fearing before city council on agenda and non-agenda items, allow five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
My name is Chuck Kinckety. I live at 615 A Street. I'm a multi-people up here normally. I know enough of you as well. I'm up here to express my concerns about the new water sewer rates that have been proposed. I am strictly against all of this because I feel that you are going to put people out of business from the business community, and you're also going to drive people out of the city that cannot afford to live in the city with these rates. I mean, the water rates are one thing, but then you're going to add another 1271 on top of it for the infrastructure. And I mean, I'm not opposed to having something done with the infrastructure. I know something has to be done, but this is way too steep, way too steep for the average taxpayer. And I tell you what, I've been out there beating the bush out there, talking to the average taxpayer, and I have not heard one person that's in favor of this, not one. So you people need to listen to the taxpayers, the people that put you in every one of those seats, because we are not happy with this type of rate that's going to be put into place if it happens. And then, on top of that, then you're going to add another $4 on top of it per month. I mean, that's ridiculous. You know, I mean, people, you take a person that's making $16,000 a month, that has a family of five, how can they possibly pay this rate? I talked to a businessperson today that has a $500 for three-month thing, water rate, and they said if this goes up, they're going to have to go out of business. Now, is this what you people really want, to drive businesses out of the city? I mean, come on. You know, something has to be done in another venue. And I'm not opposed to possibly doing a millage on the infrastructure and doing the rates, the 608 and 638 for the water sewer, but then when you add another 1271 on top of it, that can't happen. That just cannot happen. And if it does, I beg to differ with you people, something else is going to happen. And you people probably won't like it. It's already happened one time, and you don't want to see it happen again. So that's about all I have at this point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
Good evening, my name is Jane Aubrey. I live at 126 West Woodner Street. I'm a business owner in the City of Alpena. Eight years ago, my husband and I bought the Thomas S. Lamont and Harborside Mall. We invested every dime that we had to make this a business in this community. I've been born and raised here. The first year was a very rough year for us in business. We had one part-time employee who worked one day. We have since reached our employee level to two part-time employees. If, under your current water proposal, as I read it in the newspaper, for business, we would be paying $31.42 per thousand gallons. We just wrote the City of Alpena Water Management, a $2,300 bill for our water for three months. Under your proposed plan, we would be paying that almost every month. We don't make that kind of money. We just don't have it. We don't want to have to close our doors, put two families out of business, out of a job. We would probably have to just close up and let everything go back. We don't make a lot of money. My husband took $7,200 out of that business for the $1,000. I took nothing. I do all the bookwork and all the billing, just an averaged family trying to survive in this community. I hope that you will take some consideration for some of the businesses that use a lot of water. When we were here last year, 2013, we were told we were not a high user, but under your proposed plan, we are considered a high user. And we just don't have that kind of money. We hope that you will take this into consideration along with the other individuals in this community. You work for us, and we would like you to stay working for us. We would like to remain a part of this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jane.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm George Suzwitz. I live at 2638 Frederick Avenue, and I am the race coordinator for the Alpena Snowcross race that we are finally going to have because Mother Nature has been fantastic to us this year. We thank the city for hauling all the snow and all the subcontractors. We have more than enough snow this year. The race series is very excited to come to Alpena because it is a stop that we actually get spectators at, and the town shows its support. But we've run into a little bit of a situation. Our insurance requires that we have an EMT on staff at all times, just in case anything happens. Currently, we are looking for a potential sponsorship from the city to provide that ambulance for us for this upcoming Saturday and Sunday. Our race starts Saturday at noon, will probably run to about 9:00 at night, and then Sunday our race starts at 9:00 in the morning and will run to about 4:00. Dr. Bill, he said he'd be able to provide an ambulance, but if they got a call, then the ambulance would have to leave, and then we would have to shut down our race. It really wouldn't be an issue for Saturday because we're going into the night already and we have lights and stuff like that, but Sunday, we try to, you know, get the races done and try and get the racers back on the road so that they can make a home at a decent time. So that we, you know, it'd be nice to have an ambulance on staff at all times, just in case if there was a call, the ambulance wouldn't have to leave. So I'm just seeking a, I guess, sponsorship from the city to be able to provide that service for us. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Knowing that you are coming, I ask for the modifications of the agenda so if you can stick around for a meeting, we'll discuss that. Consent agenda this evening, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $180,069.57, and B is approval of a budget amendment to increase the economic development line item in the Downtown Development Authority to pay for three completed facade brands.
Will we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Under announcements this evening, we have a recognition of former Cemetery Division Head Dan Morrison on his retirement from the Department of Public Works after 23 years and three months of service to the City of Alpena. Dan's here, right? Okay, I also have a mayoral proclamation. Whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established in October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve, and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. And whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the San Francisco International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary, hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers to the community. And whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of visual communication film festivals offer as a means to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and bring cultural events to the Alpena and surrounding communities, in the hope that these films inspire a shared vision of conservation of all marine environments through its stunning, sometimes controversial, and always conversation starting films. And whereas the Great Lakes region offered, often considered the third coast, is a vital part of global waterways, thus making global waterways issues our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay Film Festival explores waterways issues through some of the most impressive ocean and Great Lakes-inspired films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussions with award-winning internationally recognized filmmakers. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 20th, 2014, as Thunder Bay Film Festival Week in the City of Alpena. Okay, no public hearings this evening. Report of officers, we have food truck operations within the Downtown Development District.
There is a memo from Leslie Dort, the Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority, regarding the meeting of January 7th, at which the Board gave their support for food trucks operating in the downtown district pursuant to regulations and procedures imposed by the city. I, well, I can get to that here in my memo. On January 9th, the city received a letter from the DDA Executive Director, Leslie Dort, indicating that the DDA Board at its January 7th meeting had voted to support the operation of food trucks within the DDA pursuant to regulations and procedures imposed by the city. Although I am a DDA Board member, I arrived at the meeting late due to other commitments and did not take part in the discussion or vote. I did receive an update from Leslie and reviewed the meeting minutes. The issue was brought before the DDA Board by Michelle Sylvester and her husband, who would like to operate a food truck within the DDA as well as other parts of the city. I believe it is premature for the council to take action on this issue at this time. If you look at it again, that when the DDA supported this, it was pursuant to regulations and procedures imposed by the city. We don't have any in place, and it is not something that we would sit here tonight and come up with. So, most other cities that do have these operations within their jurisdiction, and not always without a degree of controversy, Traverse City is an example of that, where they have had on and off again controversy regarding them, but they do have an ordinance in place. They enact the ordinance, which includes usually criteria for the operation of the food trucks, hours of operation, permitted locations, licensing requirements, and any other additional information. Such an ordinance has not been sufficiently researched at this time. Additionally, the city's current parking violation fee schedule prohibits the use of any city parking space, whether it's in a lot or on the street, for the selling of merchandise. It specifically says that is a fine, and it goes from 10, 20, to 40, I believe. Due to the variety of unresolved issues, I would recommend that this proposal be referred back to the DDA and the city staff, primarily the Planning and Development Director, the Police Chief, and the City Engineer, with a charge of researching and developing a comprehensive ordinance for the operation of food trucks within the city, as well as appropriate modifications to the city parking violation fee schedule. It is important that a single set of regulations be developed to ensure consistent implementation for all potential food truck operators, not just the current request. Once completed and reviewed by the city attorney, the ordinance can be forwarded to city council for its consideration. I believe that would be in the best interest of all parties if we do that.
Any timeline for that at all?
I talked with Leslie about getting their committee together as quickly as possible. I don't know whether they can have things by the next DDA Board meeting, which is pretty early. I think it's the 4th of February, so it may be March, and then we get it to the council right after that. Now, this does not prevent Michelle, who is here, and her husband, from operating on private property as long as it's zone property, and they have permission of the owner. It's where, basically, we're talking about, with this ordinance, it would certainly affect all city-owned property, whether it be parks or parking lots or on-street parking, but it will also set up regulations for just general operation, which would affect them, but I think we can work with them if they want to get going earlier on private property. But we'll go as quickly as we can, and I said, let's, you know, move along. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Other cities have done this. We can take those ordinances, make them fit what works best for us, modify the violations schedule, and get it back. Get it reviewed quickly by Bill, and then get it to the council. I'd rather take a little bit of time and make sure we're doing it right than to just rush forward, because if you approve this, we still don't have any regulations or anything in place, so we still need to do that. So technically, they wouldn't be able to do it anyways until we create.
That just makes sense. I mean, getting it back to you guys to make sure all the rules are fair and consistent. I would ask, too, that we, you know, keep in mind and that we have a real strong ease of doing business with the city. I would strongly recommend that we work with them and find locations that they're interested in too. I've seen these trucks in other cities and have worked really well, and it seemed like there was always a lot of traffic around and such, so just to make sure that we, you know, I totally agree with what you're saying, but...
Well, staff has met with Michelle and husband and wife. Sorry, I just can't remember.
Ben.
Ben. And we did go over potential, you know, prospective sites, so we've kind of gotten into that. And obviously, in an ordinance, we wouldn't be that specific because it would vary with every vendor, but at least we can make it general to where those things can be fit in and determined as part of the licensing, in essence, that we would grant. Then we can add those criteria in.
I would also like to add that at the most recent Michigan Municipal League Conference, we, one of the highlights of that conference was helping citizens to understand the walkability of their city, especially at lunchtime. And that's what we did. That was one of the things that we did. We walked two miles to a park, actually a park along the river in Detroit that had been updated and renovated, and it was absolutely beautiful. It was the most wonderful walk that left everything natural and, and it was just wonderful. And at the end of it, there were several vendors there, truck vendors, and every, the place was packed. It was just wonderful. So in combination with having a good meal at lunchtime, if that's what you're looking for, and exercising, I would encourage you not to give up. And I hope we can move this along expeditiously so that they can go.
The staff is supportive. We just want to make sure we do it right, and that's for the benefit of everybody.
Yes, I understand that.
The city, the citizens, the community, other businesses, and of course, the operators of the food trucks.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to add, and it just kind of came up this way, but I sent an email to Greg, probably a couple weeks before this came up, that we should look at the possibility of regulating food trucks because there's an explosion of them across the country, and they figure in five years it's going to peak, and they're going to be everywhere, that we should come up with a comprehensive plan. And then you have a food truck coming.
And it's here. We're designed to use it.
And we're really excited. We thank you for investing in Alpena, but, and we'll move this along as quickly as we can, and I think it'll add a great dimension to our downtown or wherever you decide to park it, and encourage others to do it. I think it's going to be effective. Thank you.
And I won't add much, other than can only hope that you've got enough business in the private sector right now until we get this worked out in the city, but I'm pretty sure we can move that along pretty good. So we'll take no action unless someone wants to.
Send it back to staff?
Do you need to send it back?
Do they need a motion to do that, to send it back to the DDA?
I think that would be good enough.
I move we send this issue back to staff and DDA to develop a comprehensive ordinance.
Sexton?
Third, if you need one.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Communications and petitions, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. Presentation by Sprely, Lant, and Cransky.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Phil Sprely. With me is Mark Sandu from Sprely, Lant, and Cransky. We're going to review the audited financial statements for the City of the year, this year that ended June 30th, 2013. There's three references, a free document you should have, one just been meaning, Mark passed out this blue agenda sheet, and you will try to stick to that. Secondly, you should have previously received the Audit Communications Letter.
I don't know if I gave it yet.
And then, thirdly...
See, I was going to leave that.
That I didn't give him, but that's okay.
We'll verbally present it, yes. And then lastly, you have the bound audit report, which is a comprehensive summary of your financial activities for the year. What I'd like to do first is just, I'm going to do an agenda sheet. We do a number, we use a number of people in the firm to audit. It is a, you are a big entity. It's time-consuming. We also are in Karen's hair and everybody else's hair that works at the city while they're trying to get their jobs done, but we need their attention. So we try to bring a little bigger staff in and be out in, and as quick as we can. But again, it is a lengthy process. Underwriting the services provided, one, again, is a comprehensive annual financial report, the auditor's communications letter, which I'm going to go over before we get into the audited financial statements. And if you receive more than $500,000 of federal financial aid, then there is a separate federal financial audit that would be required. And then lastly, throughout the year, we're always available for consulting any special projects or questions that staff may have. Audit communications letters. In that letter, what we indicated that in the audit process, this is a divided process. We have certain responsibilities as auditors, you have certain responsibilities, and you accept and have to take responsibility for these financial statements. Again, our purpose is to render an opinion on those, and found in your audited financial report is that opinion letter, which Mark will just cover very briefly. Also, as a part of the audit process, there are certain estimates that become a part of those financial statements. Everything isn't, for instance, cash, very exact. We can measure that down to the very last dollar, what cash you had at a particular point in time. But in a financial statement, there are certain assets that the auditors and financial people have to make certain estimates or assumptions. A good example of that would be depreciation. This building, your vehicles, they all wear out. We can't tell you exactly what that time would be, but again, we use professional estimates for those types of assets to record an expense in your financial statements for the wear and tear on those types of assets. Also... Also, you have certain allowances for certain receivables, and nobody can predict exactly what that amount of uncollectible receivables, for instance, in the ambulance fund may be. But again, we make estimates, make sure that we're measuring those as best as possible year in, year out. And then also, a part of the estimates is your, what's called OPEB, or Post-Employment Deficit Cost, to retirees. And in this, there's certain actuarial assumptions that the actuaries, again, they have to use estimates that would be based upon rates of return on investments, life expectancies. And again, maybe just to help you understand, there are certain estimates that are embedded or part of the financial statements. As part of the process, if we have any disagreement with management that we can't resolve, we would have to report them to you as the board members governing the organization. Pleased to report that we had no disagreement with management. Pension plans. There are new governmental accounting standards that have been submitted for pension plans. This will affect the city of Alpena. There's a liability that previously has not been fully recorded, because governmental accounting standards did not require it. That has changed, so next year, you will have to implement that. The approximate value or the approximate cost of that liability here, financial statements will be a little over $2 million. It's a big number. Also, there are what are called now new clarity standards. There's always standards being promulgated by the county boards and bodies. Actually, this is one that we think will help as far as, one place you'll be able to see it is in the opinion letter. There's a little bit clearer, a little bit more concise in what we're trying to say in the opinion letter. Also, then lastly, I'd just like to point out governmental deposit insurance. A year ago, under FDIC rules, the city still had virtually unlimited insurance under FDIC rules. At December 31, last year, that changed. We've now gone back to the old rules, of which your deposits can be insured for up to $250,000. Actually, governmental units have a double benefit here, so if you have a savings account, that can be insured in the same institution for $250,000. You have a checking account that also in the same institution insured. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Mark, and he'll kind of walk again through some of the key pages in that audited financial statement.
As I advertised, it's 184 page from the report, so if we start now, we can get done by six o'clock this morning. But due to the economic times and the financial pressures, there's only 20 of these that were printed, and I just wanted to let the public know that the city has a new logo, and we are able to use it, and it really looks nice on the cover of the report. But we're not trying to shut the public out, because this has been published at the Michigan Department of Treasury website under michigan.org. If you go to Treasury, you can see every audit report of any government in the state of Michigan. We're not trying to hide this from them. There's only so many of these that have been printed, and I had to steal this one from Karen.
I didn't know you had that.
Anyway, for the new people on the council, basically, a caper is a comprehensive annual financial report, and it's different from traditional governmental reporting. It's got three parts instead of just one, so I'd like to think of it as an Oreo cookie, and most of the people in the accounting world just have the cream filling, but the city of Alpena's got the two cookies on the top and the bottom. So basically, your comprehensive annual report is in three sections on item three, or C3 there. The introductory section has a transmittal letter that the city issues. It tells some of the things about the city of Alpena that would be of interest to a person reading the report, and it has your certificate in there from the GFOA that for 19 consecutive years, this has been an award-winning report that the city has submitted. And then the middle section is the traditional governmental accounting report that has our auditor's opinion, management discussion and analysis, and financial statements. And last but not least, the statistical section that's put together by all the departments in the city, that you could go on Jeopardy or Turbo Pursuit on the city of Alpena topic, and everything that you needed to know should be in those statistical. So it's quite an extensive collection of information. So as advertised in the clarity standards, if you turn to page 32, this looks different. For those newcomers, it's going to look a lot different. In the past, our opinion letter, everything was all jumbled together, and this is the first standard that I really liked that the accounting profession has come up with. It broke your independent auditor's report from us to the city down in different sections, and it pretty much tells the story of what's in each of the paragraphs. So the first one is a report on the financial statements, but what are we reporting on the city of Alpena for the year ending June 30, 2013? In the second section, the city is the one that's responsible for the issuance of these financial statements, and we're going to give an opinion, so that's our auditor's responsibility. And the last little sentence in the auditor's responsibility section says, "We believe that the audit evidence we have at stake is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions." And then we give our opinion in the last paragraph on page 31. "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly follow governmental auditing standards that written is accurate." And then the second page is some of the additional things that you have in your caper, that we have required supplementary information and other information that's included in this report, but they're not the degree of audit service that the basic financial statements. And last but not least, the other reporting required by government auditing standards, we're just telling you that when you find your audit communications letter, the last two pages of that is an opinion by our firm that you provided adequate internal controls under governmental auditing standards to issue a financial report. Page 33 continues on with the management discussion and analysis, and that just gets some more financial highlights on page 33. The city ended the year with $51,823,039 in net position. It took everything together, the cash, the buildings, and paid all your bills. That's what would be left over. Of that, only $5,297,374 is unspoken, so out of the $51 million, about $45 million of it is spoken for in assets and already expended funds. So the $5,297,374 represents the available fund balance that the city has on hand to meet your ongoing obligations in the future. In 2013, the debt position decreased by $1.5 million. That's basically because if you look at the last two bullet, or three bullet points, that you had depreciation or usage charges that Phil emphasized that that's an estimate of how much it costs to use your facilities, $1.7 million, and you only added $245,000 in structure. So you used more than you were able to replenish in 2013. And we have OPEB, which is your health insurance liability increased by $326,000, so added to the decrease in that position. You provided services of $12.3 million in the governmental activities area and $4.2 million in the business-type activities, which is water and sewer operations. Page four and 55 gets the bullet points that are on that blue sheet. Basically, in the general fund in the city of Alpena for 2013, you had $8,742,022 in revenues. You spent $8,322,966, and you transferred $383,066 to other funds within the city, so you ended up with a change in fund balance of just about the break-even point in 2013 on an almost $9 million budget. You had a $35,990 excess. Ended the year with $3,131,728 fund balance, which represents 35.9% of your total expenditures for the year, about 131 days of excess fund balance going into 2014. This went down a little bit. You ended the year last year with 37.2 and 136 days. So basically, what is reflected in the change in fund balance that the city went through 2013, just about a break-even stance. So with that, are there any questions? Because I know you've been studying this report for the last six weeks.
Any issues that are unique to Alpena, or would you say it's fair to say most of our challenges are pretty universal for the city?
Most of your challenges are pretty universal within the state of Michigan, because every year, the revenues and governmental units go down, and you have to combat that by having less expenditures, because there's less money available to spend. And now with the new governmental auditing and accounting standards, they're going to put more pressure on the city, because that $2.2 million retirement liability is going to show up next year as a reduction of that $5 million unaccounted-for fund equity, so that's going to go down, and that's going to mean even less money, so I don't know. And then declining property tax values, I think that, I don't know, you'd asked, yeah, I think that's turned around a little bit. It's not declining so rapidly, but basically, that puts enormous pressure on the city when property values are going down. The only thing you do is raise the millage to maintain the same tax base, but the city has not chosen to do that, but the city with the same millage that it has completely. I guess you're in the leaky boat with everybody else, but the city has a fine staff, and they try to stay within their budget, that we're not talking about massive deficits. The worst thing that happened this year is that you almost broke even. A lot of other governmental entities went south of the order on expenditures, so have them if the city are holding the line.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And, you know, thank you for the kind words on our staff. I think that anybody else has anything else for, let's go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll receive and file, please.
Come on.
Okay.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
No one finished business. New business this evening is a request from the Downtown Development Authority to increase the fees for parking overtime violations. Leslie is on her way.
Hi there. Leslie Dorff for Downtown Development. The item on your agenda is one bullet, but I believe I'm talking about more than just that one, if you want to do that.
Yeah, she's talking about the...
The whole package.
The whole package, yeah.
Traffic control orders as well.
Yes. I have a lot of notes. For the better part of the last year, the DDA Parking Committee has reviewed the status of parking within the downtown. We've surveyed downtown folks. We've reread all of the parking studies that have taken place in the past decade, including the one that was just finished within the last six months. The full board has reviewed the Parking Committee's recommendations and lends its support to the proposed plan, which you have most of in front of you. The objective overall with everything that we'll be chatting about tonight is to allow for, to maintain free parking downtown, first of all, and to provide convenient short-term parking in the most obvious four spots for our short-term guests, and then also to have parking for our long-term guests that's still nearby, the businesses they want to go to in lots of different areas. So we're trying to solve both of those things. So tonight, on behalf of the DDA, the first thing is the parking violation fee currently, if you're parked overtime. So for example, if there is a parking attendant downtown, and you're in a two-hour stall, and you're parked three hours, you'll get a parking ticket. The parking ticket is only at $3. Every other like-parking ticket is $10. All we're asking is that the $3 fee be raised to be in line with other like-parking violations within the city.
Now, am I correct in saying that for the fee itself and for the two-hour parking, there's very little, well, there are some changes that you're going to present a little bit later about where those two-hour parkings are?
Yes.
But right now...
A single point would be just the parking fee.
Just the, we'll just cover the parking fee itself, or how much the violation costs?
I agree, that's the TCO, the standard itself.
I believe so. Are we in the discussion?
And I'm not sure how you all want to do this, but we need to go along for us different pieces.
I'd have to ask maybe Greg or Joel, is the control order for the violation fee completely separate from the control order that says where those parking spaces are, or is it as a whole?
I'm not sure that it's an actual control order. What it is, it's a change to our fee schedule. That's where the parking violation are. They're in our fee schedule, that's part of the budget, so we would simply need to amend that.
Amend the fee.
Right, the fee schedule. Violation number one, where it says overtime parking, paid within 10 days is $3. After 10 days, $6. After 2012, is to change that to 10, 20, and 40, which is like all the other parking violations. I think the only one that's different is handicap, which is higher.
Greg, would it be your suggestion to just take these one at a time?
Yes, that would probably be the best way to do it.
It makes sense to put it in line with all the other parking violations we have.
And I think the only reason why it is different is because of the DDA, because the Downtown Development Authority. Did you establish, did that group establish that $3 rate? And, I mean, parking in the wrong direction, on the wrong side of the street, or parking in the street between 2:00 and 6:00 a.m., those are, all those other ones are, the other entities at some point in history set those rates, whether it had been...
The city council set those.
The council or what have you. We've just kept these at $3, I would assume, because that's what the DDA presented to us at that time. Now the DDA is asking that we raise it, and so it would be the same as every other violation. I honestly, if I knew what was best about parking downtown, it would already had happened maybe two years ago, but, so I really generally am have to go with what the DDA recommends, because you did the study, right? There was, the study was done, and then you had, you gave, I guess my only concern was whether you had enough, you know, you got public comment or anything like that, as far as how do people feel as far as your...
I would say generally, people don't like to get a parking violation.
Well, certainly not.
And they would like it to be a low amount, but it was suggested in the studies and with the consultants that we spoke to, that if you raise it and get it in line with the rest, it would be a slightly better deterrent than $3. Some people who are... Some people who are habitual abusers of that one, where they park longer than two hours, it's just their fee that they factor into their budget for parking. And they park there every day and they pay their three hour, three-dollar ticket every day.
Ten dollars is unreasonable, and that's what everything else is.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, too. It falls right in line. I was going to ask, when was the last time that these fees were established? And you answered that question already, but it just makes perfect sense to me to make this all line up with all the other fees.
If you look on the, in the budget, too, on page one seventy-four, seven-one of oh three.
Seven-one of all.
And everything else is ten dollars, ten, twenty, and forty.
Would move that we raise the fee for parking overtime to be in alignment with other parking violations?
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
No, I was just going to ask if there was any other discussion.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next, every time I wish, is overnight parking stalls. The Downtown Development Authority is requesting the city of Alpena add an additional nine permit-based overnight parking spaces in the downtown to serve our residents who live in the downtown. This would bring the total overnight parking permit-based parking to thirty-one spaces from its current twenty-two. In June of 2009, overnight parking was established by the city council at the request of the DDA. The number of the downtown apartments at that time, twenty-two parking spaces, were sufficient. It was a plan by the city and the DDA to encourage residential living downtown and remodeling of upper floors to apartments. In order to show the support for those, the city was gracious enough to offer up the parking spaces for the residents. Now we have thirty apartments downtown, but only twenty-two parking spaces. So we have a short call. We're asking that to be increased to nine, and the additional nine to come from the DDA lot that's located behind the antique store and dry dock. So there's currently six parking spaces in there. Actually, I have a map. Do you have a map? Or do you have that map?
They have, no, we were handed one.
You have that map? Okay, so does that show your overnight parking?
It's orange. Well, it shows it as the orange long-term parking. So it doesn't really?
You have a pretty handy area. So, on here and the red, I believe, you have really tiny, but those are the different lots. The overnight parking spaces are not concentrated in one lot because our apartments are not concentrated in one area of downtown. So what happens is the DDA sends the property owners each year, these are where the parking spaces are, where would you like your apartments to be? And if more than one apartment building wants a specific lot, then it's drawn by lottery. But for the most part, it's pretty logical, it's a limit you can choose. So to least affect the core parking in downtown and still be close to the newest apartments, the Parking Committee is recommending behind the dry dock there in the DDA lot.
So if I understood what you said correctly, you said you had a total of thirty-one spaces for overnight for any of these thirty apartments. I mean, do we, do we understand, is that enough? Is there two or three cars per, you know?
The understanding was the city was going to allow for one parking spot per apartment, and if there was more needed, there's overflow available behind City Hall at a reduced rate because each of these parking spaces cost the property owner twenty dollars a month. But behind City Hall would be fifteen a month. The other piece that the Parking Committee felt was important, we have residents in our downtown, and the parking spaces that we're offering them, they have to be out by nine a.m., which seems a little inconvenient if you kick me out of my own driveway at nine a.m., which is how I view and the Parking Committee views these parking spaces. So we're also asking that the twenty-two and then therefore the thirty-one, if that's approved by council, parking spaces be changed from the six p.m. to nine a.m. to a twenty-four seven. And the property owners would need to understand that if that happens, you know, the snowplow is going to be slightly different, they'll need to treat it as their parking space in their driveway, and they'll be responsible and shovel it out.
Is there any consideration for overnight gas of residents downtown?
Yes, we've made allowances for that over just this last holiday season with a temporary parking permit and then the extra cars behind City Hall.
Who is responsible for shoveling the snow for the thirty-one? The renter or?
Well, how about we put it like this? It's city property. However, if the car is there, plow's not going to get in.
Right.
So then it goes to the property owner. Then to the landlord, if the landlord is different than the property owner, and then to the tenant from there. So typically, my phone will ring.
So currently, currently in the twenty-two stalls that you have, those tenants have to move their vehicle by six a.m.?
Nine a.m.
By nine a.m.
They can enter it after six p.m.
So they just need to get their vehicle out of the parking lot at nine a.m. so the trucks can come in and plow that lot?
That's year-round.
That's year-round.
The idea was that now it's available for others. The problem is, you have, if you're renting downtown, your home's sick.
Where are you going to go?
What do you do with your car? You go on vacation. Now you've got to find another place to put your car. In the meantime, it just doesn't make sense. It's no different than anybody else, who they're renting or they own a home, is that they have generally a secure twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five day a year parking space.
It seemed good faith on the part of the city and the DDA that if we're going to encourage residential living in the downtown, we should provide one space per apartment. And typically, the spaces were designated into our spots, which is another reason why you've had to be out by nine, because then it turned into a two-hour spot.
One of the benefits of encouraging downtown living and what that brings to communities worth giving them some parking spots, which is even titled to.
And I understood correctly, the twenty-dollar parking permit, that's not for these, or is that the fee that is charged for?
That is the fee that's charged to the property owner.
Okay.
And then they choose to pass it on to their renter or not. But if the property owner does not pay for permit, then that apartment does not have one. Because, you know, there are properties that have private spaces and they don't need, or they'll buy from a private, oh, privately-owned parking lot in the downtown. We're just making sure they're available for the number that we have.
Move we accept traffic control order one dash fourteen.
Second.
And does that, at the same time, rescind this other one, am I in the right spot? There was something in here that? Does that, if we approve the new one that Sean just recommended, does that automatically rescind three of oh-nine? Because it's the same.
Right. Yeah, I've got them both right here.
Automatically rescind the other one or?
I think I just put it in the motion that you rescinding traffic control order three dash oh-nine, replacing it with one dash fourteen. You do that, then that takes care of it.
Is that fine, Karen?
Yep.
That's great presentation.
And where does it, that changes the number of lots and their location, but where does it change the, from, where does it change to twenty-four hours? Did I miss that part?
Twenty-four seven, yeah.
Because we're, where does, do we do it all at the same time?
Well, this never mentioned anything about hours before.
It doesn't.
All it mentioned is where they're located.
Right. How do we change that if we're going to agree to do that as well? It's not in the, is that something else?
One fourteen.
Do you remember, Rich, when this was done before, how that was handled as far as the hours? It might just be the easiest would be approve this as it is, and then make a motion to change those overnight spaces from the current six p.m. to nine a.m. to twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And just make that as a separate motion. Probably the simplest way.
And you'll just find wherever that is, whether it's in the E, I don't know. I don't know where.
I don't think it's.
Must be written somewhere.
Yeah. But at least we'll have a motion to that effect, so it will then take place.
It is in the communication that the property owners received. Or have been.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
End the motion regarding the hours.
You know, I'm wondering, though, because it seemed to me, because I was part of that when that happened, it seemed to me when the apartments came in, that it was just, that was the ordinance downtown, so they could park from seven to nine and still be in compliance because it was two-hour parking, but by nine o'clock, they had to be out. I don't know if there was a separate, a separate, ever a separate.
Well, there may not have been because of that, but now that we are making them twenty-four seven, I think we should have a motion to state that is in, anyway, that those spaces so designated as overnight, under the traffic control order, are now twenty-four seven.
I don't suppose there'd be a problem with that, because currently, I mean, when it was under the guidelines right now, a person that lived downtown would basically, he said to come out and move their car to some other parking spot that was daytime with no time limit, and then go back home. And then come back out at night and put it back in their spot for overtime. So that car is somewhere. Somewhere in downtown.
Downtown all the time.
So why is it in the same spot?
Exactly. That's why it doesn't make sense. It's like you're, you know, you have your sixteen-year-old son and he's to keep getting out of the driveway.
So if somebody wants to move that, we change that to twenty-four seven, and then someone on staff will find where that is and fix it. If it isn't, that's it.
You need a motion?
Yep.
Now move we change it to twenty-four seven?
On the designated.
Oh, yeah, right. On designated parking spots. Sorry.
If not, everybody's going to be happy.
Yeah.
I would second that.
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, are, Leslie, are the spots marked in any way so that people know you shouldn't be parking here at once?
No, on any given day. They used to be. There does seem to be an issue keeping the signs up.
Oh.
So we're working on solutions for that also, because they do need to be identified, especially if they're going to be now permanent twenty-four-seven spots. So signage is going to come along, but probably not till the spring.
Thank you.
And it reads assigned by property. So that it's not a free-for-all at five o'clock. Not that that would be fun at all.
And you have a last, Greg? You have one, just one more?
Yep.
All right. Now, you want, do you have this map in your packet? Because.
I have it.
Well, that's different. It's slightly different. This is a memory circle on it. If you can see this one, take a look at it because it does affect what we're going to talk about. The current parking in downtown.
I can pre-ack that.
Well, keep this map in mind as I read through this one, and then we'll, as well as light up important. Downtown employees are important and a valued part of downtown Alpena. Hundreds of employees work in downtown's retail, restaurant, service, cultural, entertainment, and industrial businesses. Actually, we have sixteen hundred that we employ now. It's important to the DDA to provide downtown employees adequate free parking. That's just something that we find important. Yet we need to balance that while making convenient parking available for our guests to ensure they are comfortable and happy with their shopping experience, especially as we age as a community. The customer should have the best, easiest spots to park. All-day parking areas are designated for people who will be downtown for a length of time. So if you're going to have a meal, have your hair done, see a movie, do some shopping, those longer-term things that might take place. Typically, you wouldn't be in a two-hour spot, but you'd be in an all-day spot. That way, you're not time constrained. But free two-hour parking, whether on-street or in a lot, is designed for the guests of our downtown who spend their money in our businesses. Right now, that isn't happening as regularly as we'd like it to. Over the past twelve months, the DDA Parking Committee has been working to reinstate the Parking Management Plan of nineteen ninety-seven, which was similar to the plan of two thousand three, but had a lot of similarities to the plan of two thousand seven. They all have similar veins. They all were enforced, and then it backed off. So we're losing that consistency. They're all great plans, and what we're suggesting is very similar to much of it. The recently completed parking study supports the value and effectiveness of a parking plan that establishes a downtown core as its customer parking. The twenty-fourteen Downtown Parking Management Plan fits the needs of our businesses and property owners while keeping an eye on our target, convenient, accessible parking for shoppers. The DDA district, you may not have this number, but has more than sixteen hundred parking spaces in its downtown. And actually, on the map, you do have, there is the total parking area in acreage. We have twenty-six point one acres of parking downtown. We have only twenty-two point seven acres of buildings in downtown. So by square footage, linear square foot, we have a lot more parking. The majority of these parking spaces, the sixteen hundred I refer to, are public, owned by the city and made available to the public free of charge. And those numbers are in the upper right-hand corner of your map in the blue box. The city of Alpena and Downtown Development Authority are pleased to offer designated downtown employee parking areas at no cost to our employees and business owners, whether a single or part of a company or one of hundred. All we're asking is that they observe the parking management rules that we're going to hopefully instill. The map that you're looking at is the suggested parking map. So here is what we currently have. And on this map, there are, in the core, eighty-one two-hour parking spaces. Because we're going to shift how this looks a little bit. Right now, there's a couple two-hour over here. The two-hour are the bright green on this map, by the way. So we've got two-hours sprinkled all over the place where we may not necessarily need two-hour, that all-day would be sufficient. And then we have some lots that are split by two-hour. For a parking attendant to walk this is pretty strenuous. It takes a lot of time, and it's still not serving the core of our downtown by having a lot of four-two-hour parking available. So what we're suggesting is this, and this is what you all have in front of you. We're suggesting it turn to this type of map, where we have two full lots with eighty-three spots, so two more stalls we gain, of short-term parking, with the focus being for customers. Of course, if you're running a, if you happen to be a food service, food service industry and you have delivery, there's nothing that says you can't park there either. You're coming and going just as quick as everybody else in a two-hour spot. So that helps that business also. But we'd like the lots on your sheet, which is lot number one and lot number eight, a lot of folks will know that as the lot behind the Center Building and the Owl at the corner of Third and River. Lot number eight, which is sandwiched between Sherwin-Williams and the Alpena News, right off the alley there. Those seem to be having the highest concentration of the two-hour need. Then we're suggesting that absolutely every other public, city-owned lot within the DDA district be all-day parking. So if you were going to be downtown for an extended length of time, park at Calvin Plaza, park behind the Cellar Building, park behind Riverside Framing. There are a lot of close parking available to you. Hop across River Street, or Third Street, rather, at the, after the Center Building, and park there. That's all-day. But those core eighty-three, along with the on-street two-hundred-and-thirteen parking spots that are two-hour, we'd like our employees to stay out of on a regular basis. That is, in a nutshell, what we're suggesting.
And this seventy-one long-term parking on-street is, I'm assuming that those are maybe a couple blocks from actual downtown.
Yeah, those aren't identified really well on this one for you. Let me switch back to the little complex map where.
You went out of the.
Did I? How did I come back? Oh, all right.
You have to click.
So in the lines here on the road?
Yeah.
The yellow lines are all-day.
Basically, around City Hall.
Yeah. And then there's a few over here, right there.
Yeah.
But then there's the City Hall there all-day.
Right.
That's currently, and that would, the status quo for on-street.
So you're not changing any on-street?
Not, we're just doing the parking lot.
Everybody that's been parking there will already know, they already know where that is.
Yes. The other advantage to changing it to parking lots is it really helps our city engineering department and everybody's budget. department and everybody's budget, because the signage is so much easier just to sign the entrance of parking lots. This one is short-term. This one is long-term. It makes, uh, we finding signs, when we get those installed, much simpler. And there are some sprinkled here and some sprinkled here. And no one really has to work. Walk very far if you work in the downtown. There is a long-term parking lot within a block and a half of your business.
I understand the desire that employees don't park where customers would be better suited. That makes sense. Was there any thoughts of just designating a lot for employees and then having everything else as all-day, as opposed to two-hour?
Yes. Actually, in the, um, let's see, one week ago, that's exactly how we did identify these, were employee and customer parking spaces, but employees to prevent them, because they are employees, but while they're downtown, they eat downtown, they shop downtown, they're customers, why can't they park closer? So they had, we got into a known pleasure issue then, that they're, that we weren't calling it a PC, correct? You know, there was an issue there, so we went to short-term and long-term.
Yes, my concern is that the short-term is short. And you mentioned having dinner and going to a movie, or getting, and those are extended activities. So I guess my concern would be to bring people downtown, to get them to spend the day, and a lot of those two-hours might not be utilized, or they'll be ticketed, one or the other. So I, I like the unpopular idea better, I guess, where it's employee and customer, and all those customer spaces could then be all-day.
Anything is possible. There's no way to police that, though.
We'd say one of the things, too, and I was going to ask a question on this, if you've done any surveys, the last survey that I could find 10 years ago in metropolitan areas, the average shopping trip for a downtown is two hours and 42 minutes. Is that close to what you're seeing in, in research as well?
Right now, and this is just, uh, you know, I don't know what the correct term is, but it's really just side-block research, it's not anything official for our downtown. But our downtown right now is what I refer to as a post office downtown, and people are running in and grabbing their stamp and leaving. And they're very destination-focused, and then they go. So we need to, before, because I completely agree with you, two-hours is not enough time for the shoppers we're trying to attract, but we don't have those shoppers yet on a mass scale. The, having Culligan Plaza available, having behind-the-stellar available, having all of these other lots behind Dr. Beatty's office that are still all-day are right across the street from where they were used to parking. If we could get to where an average customer in downtown Alpena is wandering around for three-hours, I don't know, enjoying all the gathering places, we'd have absolutely three or four-hour. But I don't, that's just my, what I've seen walking around, we don't have that yet.
See, I would, oh, go ahead, I'm so sorry.
But I think we're getting there.
I would hope so.
I think we're getting there, and I think as the weather gets warmer, we'll see. But I can tell you, if some, if a woman goes and gets her hair done, it's going to take two-hours. And if she says, okay, I'm going to meet my husband for lunch, that's another hour of bus, and I have to be moving my car, but that doesn't, that, that doesn't seem right. And I do believe that what traffic downtown, um, is going to get to a point where people will be wanting, especially the food trucks and all of the stuff that's coming, will be spending more time in the DDA downtown, and we'll be back at this issue again.
Um, I really do think this is an ever-evolving issue in reality. I don't think any one year we're going to have it and never have it come before you again. I agree that if that's the trip that you're taking, I would probably suggest Culligan Plaza or the all-day lots. All we're doing is one, and one large lot and one small lot for two-hours to help those in our population that are the two-hour trips or less, that run into Hallmark to get a car or pick up their jewelry and garments.
Yeah. Obviously, I don't have to worry about having my hair done and spending a lot of time downtown, but, you know, I work downtown. I would say this, though, what I would propose is the alternative, in my mind, is three-hour parking. I mean, four-hours, the employees would still park there, move their car and lunch, and the, and so on. But with three-hours, we've, we've got enough time to cover that, you know, that downtown study. We wouldn't have to be changing it. I think the cars would turn over in a short enough, uh, time, so that, that would be my proposal, is that we actually extend that one-hour and go to three.
I'm not a fan of the two-hour, I think it discourages people, so that would be receptive.
And you would hate to penalize somebody who's using the downtown?
Oh, I agree. Really, I don't disagree with you. I think three-hours is great. I think four-hours is even better, but there's absolutely, I mean, that's just tough. You're just going to go out at lunch, and you'll never be able to focus on the customer usage again. So I had, I would think the DDA would not have an issue with it at all. We've had that discussion.
No, I know the DDA, before, when they instituted two-hour parking on the streets, and, um, people were upset about that, and were getting tickets, and they were using downtown shops. The DDA would allow them to come in with their ticket, and they would excuse it if they, you know, I was getting my hair done, or I was at lunch, or I would, you know, and prove that they were, um, shopping, they would excuse that ticket. Is that still a possibility?
Oh, and they are making it possible. Pretty bendy over the DDA.
Is, now, you plan to hire a parking attendant?
Yes.
For, okay.
The thought is that this wouldn't be instituted within the downtown until we actually had enforcement.
Okay.
Anybody's looking for a parking job.
Let's see, how confident are you, you can relay to people what the changes are? So you don't have upset customers who park, and it used to be two, and that's all-day, or vice versa?
You know, in all honesty, I think once spring is here and the signage up, it's, this is more complicated than this. Because as it is now, you go into a parking lot, and if the signs are all intact, it's this space to this space, and in-between these lines, and over here, and it's very confusing, especially for visitors or the elderly population. So if we have, this is long-term, all-day, and then these two lots are three-hour, I think that's completely explainable and understandable.
Honestly, I think the biggest problem is going to be with, um, shop owners who don't like to walk from a parking lot with their all-day stuff, whatever it is. I really think that's the biggest problem.
But we also have, and I have to give credit, we have a lot of shop owners who are pulling behind on, you know, pulling us and lifting us up to get this done, because their businesses are affected negatively, because their customers are older and they can't take the walk. And it's a different climate. Um, back in the 70s, you know, so-and-so would walk across the street and talk to a property owner, say, hey, get your car off the street, this is, you know, they would, they would approach each other. The climate's different, business owners won't do that as readily anymore.
And I will say, one of the biggest, uh, and it's a non-retail business, is Omni, they have two major locations, and they do have their employees park on the perimeter. I think they also lease a lot from the church there on Old Washington. So they require that of their employees, which works very effectively. And I know there are others as well, but they're one, probably of the larger employers that do that, and that is beneficial. The idea is to get that culture change with everybody, that this will benefit especially the retail businesses. And, and it's a struggle, where I came from before, in Elkhart, Indiana, we had the same struggles, in fact, we used to have, uh, what we called, uh, you know, merry-go-round, basically, with, uh, on-street parking, it was all two-hour, and office managers would send their secretaries down every two-hours to move their car, literally, because they didn't want to go a block and a half away to an all-day lot. Uh, and you would have this merry-go-round all the time. And so it's not unique just to Alpena. It is, is an, it's an ongoing issue, but it's how you begin to change that culture that they see it is in their own best interest to have the owners and their employees on the perimeter, especially when, as you said, you're not any further away than a block and a half generally from any business when you park, when you do that.
And keep in mind, the entire downtown working population is not on your shoulders. There are over 600 privately-owned parking stalls that businesses supply, that they bought the property with parking available. And there are a lot of, one parking study, there are a lot of agreements that we could form and alliances with private parking owners to have employee parking only by permit and help everybody out.
Has, has there been any effort to draw people across the bridge?
In what manner?
Well, if their parking were over there, if there was substantial parking over there, and, um, I'm just thinking how a shop owner may say, well, if, you know, if I put my business across the bridge, there's a lot more parking over there, so people would be more apt to come to my shop, or whatever. But what about the place behind the post office?
That's all-day.
Right.
And, and it's, it's used quite a bit in, you know, fishing months.
Yeah. In the summer, you have lots of vehicles with trailers, because they're, they're using launch ramp. I do believe a number of the, many of the postal employees, uh, park there in that. But that's the only lot we have, that's a public lot north of the river. All the rest of the lots that are there are basically private.
Right. I believe both restaurants have some private.
Right.
All right, well, I kind of want to wrap it up a little bit. You've done a ton of work on this. Obviously, this didn't happen overnight. You've had a study, you've had professionals come in. Personally, I like everything about it. It's simple, it's easy, this is your two-hour lot, in two different places and on the street. It's just simple. My only request would be that if this is approved, that this stays for some considerable amount of time. In the event, like you said, things may change, anything could change on any given day, but hopefully it would stay long enough for people to get used to and understand. But it's simple to understand to me. There are plenty of lots for someone to park in the event they want to go for a movie. And if you're going for a movie and a dinner, or, um, or your hair done and a lunch, for me, from my perspective, there's a lot of lots that are open for that significant amount of time. If you compare it with Toshki, you still got to put your quarters in the thing, in the meter at Toshki. So if you're getting your hair done or going to a movie, you got to come back out and put some more in. So, you know, we're still, I still think we're friendly enough to not have the meter issue. The council wants to go to the three-hour, um, that's fine. I, like I said, I like everything that you've got, I completely agree with the whole thing, just the way you did.
Just to tell, because we, I had a discussion with somebody regarding movies, really are not impacted by our parking at all anyways, because it only runs till 6:00 PM, and that's Monday through Friday. Most of the movies are after that, or they start right before, and if you park, your two-hours extends beyond six o'clock, or you're the weekends when it doesn't, it also is not in effect, or a holiday. So those nighttime, or going there in the evening for dinner, really do not become an issue at all. You could go out and spend three, four hours between that, and it wouldn't affect. It's really looking at the daytime hours, Monday through Friday, and that's, that's really all we're impacting.
And from my perspective, I like the, the thought of going beyond the expectations. As two-hour is normal, let's go to the third hour. Just to even open us up a little bit more. My thoughts.
Reiterate, reiterate about street parking.
Nothing's changing.
Nothing changes about street parking.
In this, oh.
Good. I think that's important. I really, I think that's so important. I do.
Yeah. We're, we're trying to get some street parking for our customers, really trying, but, so we obviously have a person.
Let's see, if we approve this in any form, can you come back in, let's say, six months, and five, six months, and let's know, issues, what's working, what's not working?
I'd be pleased to, sure.
I'd move that we adopt a new parking format, with the exception of changing short-term parking to three-hours versus the two-hours that was proposed.
Set.
I'm ready.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Make sure the press gets the right map. It's good map. All right, next was our added agenda item of the EMP, uh, EMP Service at the Snowcross. We have, Chief Warbush is here, Jordan gave his presentation this evening. Do you want to give us some details on that, Bill?
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Council, uh, Jordan contacted me several days ago with inquiring about the possibility of a dedicated ambulance standby at the Snowcross event. There are a couple of key points here. One is that it's a for-profit event, and so our fee schedule has its specific fee in place for for-profit events. If we vary from that, we, we open precedent that we need to be aware of, because everyone else, we charge. In fact, we've even charged some of the nonprofits, if there was a dedicated, couldn't pull the unit out to do something else, kind of a situation, because it costs overtime. And, uh, so, so just being concerned with, with that. Looking at the latest numbers, he says Saturday, noon to nine is nine hours, Sunday, nine to four is seven hours, so we're talking, uh, 32 overtime hours if the unit is dedicated and can't be pulled out. If I could pull it out for something else, I can use on-duty personnel, but we're doing 5,000 calls a year, so no unit is sitting anywhere for very long. It will get pulled out in a nine-hour period, probably two, three times most likely, if it's an in-service unit. Our first focus has to be on the emergency patients. Have to take care of the emergencies first. Can't, can't water that down at all. We don't have extra people that aren't needed for emergencies, so we'd have to have overtime people for this assignment. Is it a huge amount of money? No, it isn't really a huge amount of money. When you add it all up, uh, we're talking about 700 bucks, basically. If we charged him the over, the, uh, standby fee, it would cost $1,360, 1,360, which is basically the overtime cost plus some fee for use of the vehicle and equipment and so forth and so on. Remember, we're spending about $150,000 on each ambulance, so it's worth something to have the ambulance there, and most importantly, not someplace else where it can be pulling calls and making money. But if we just looked at the overtime costs, it's $700 per 32 overtime hours. What would we use that for otherwise, out of our budget? We use it for training, for fires, when we have a, a building fire in the city, we call in all off-duty personnel. The off-duty contingent of the department's probably about 11 people, so that could do one fire. Uh, it could be used for 11 times, so we have multiple ambulances out, and have, have to call somebody in. It could be used for one month, one month of fire trainings coverage, so that the guys that are in training aren't called away to go on ambulance calls. There's a lot of things that that can be used for. We guard our overtime very carefully, as, as you can tell, I'm passionate about overtime, because we have a real hard time keeping a lid on it. I don't just let give them it away if we can help it. I did offer Jordan several options. I offered him an in-service unit, likely to be called out, but would be there most of the time, and we routinely do those for free for community service events like hockey games, and football games, and, uh, Friday night, Chamber of Commerce things, and all the special things that happen around the community, there's almost always one of our ambulances there, but is subject to call. If there has an emergency call, it'll go someplace else. I offered an echo unit, which is a non-transporting paramedic unit. That unit's tied up during the weekdays, but it isn't tied up on the weekends, and that only takes one paramedic instead of two, so at least it would cut down on the over, on the, on the cost. Uh, but that doesn't meet his insurance regulations, his insurance company, so it has to be an ambulance. So really, our only choice is, is a dedicated unit with a standby fee, or if you choose to waive the standby fee, I would respectfully request that whoever's sponsoring this do a budget, and let me put that back in my budget, because I can't afford it.
And you've stated, that's not standard practice.
No.
No, sir. We, we don't standby free for profit events typically. Now, I, I don't discount the economic development aspects of it, that's all fine, but I don't have an extra $700 in the budget.
So the fee would be 700, not 1,360?
1,360 is the fee that we're required to charge. 700, 704 is what it'll actually cost us in manpower alone.
I don't like the idea of opening, of the precedent you might set. I mean, it, it is true, if you do it for this event, you almost have to do it for everybody else.
Exactly.
And there's no doubt we will get asked.
Oh, certainly we will.
And I wouldn't blame them for doing it.
Absolutely.
You, you know, you did it for this group, and it's not that we're, you know, we, we want the, the event to occur, we want them
Sure.
to be successful, but it, we are looking at taxpayer dollars, and then, and they are tight, and with, in the EMS fire budget, uh, they use the greatest amount of overtime of any of the departments. We do try to watch it closely, because it gets very expensive, and to do that, and for free, and just allow that, and then you have a free, and just allow that, and then you have a unit that is not available for basically, you know, a good chunk of two days, means we're not, we're reducing our service to the community that we're obligated to do. One, under the county contract that we're obligated to do, plus with our transfers that we also do. So those where we have people in distress, and obviously, they could be there as well, but we would send an ambulance there. But it becomes an issue.
We don't want to appear unsupportive. I have no problem with sending an in-service unit, but if there's somebody having a heart attack and helping the township, that unit's packed out. You can't stay at the snowmobile rates.
How many units do you have on a Saturday and Sunday that are manned?
We're manned all the time with three units before we start calling in additional personnel. We have a total of six, five in service right now.
And so there, and what I meant was, in the event that Jordan is forced to take, forced, he takes option, or his team takes option, to have, to have that unit at the function that he knows may have to leave, how many units can leave the fire department before that one has to leave his event? Is there another one manned at the fire department that goes to the first call, and then that would be the second one?
Yeah, there are three that are manned all the time, but as soon as we drop to less than four people in the station, then we start calling in to maintain that four in the station.
In the station?
That's what's necessary to respond to a fire.
So these guys wouldn't, the guys at the fairgrounds wouldn't, and I use that term loosely, they're gals, but these firemen at the fairgrounds wouldn't be, wouldn't still be at the station, you know what I'm saying? So if that, if they were at the fairgrounds, and your other team was at the fire station, and that team...
No, because they can't take fire apparatus.
Because they can't take that.
They have to come back to get a fire truck, and that wouldn't be a good system.
So how are they on, how are they still on call if they're not, if they're not there? If they can answer a call, if they're at the fairgrounds and they can answer a call?
They can respond from there to wherever they're going, which is fine, and it probably is an ambulance call. If it's a fire, that's fine, as long as we have four guys at the station to take fire apparatus. But we don't want to leave them being the last two to call out, because they have to go back to get a fire truck.
Right, okay. And that would be the same circumstance under a football game or a hockey game?
Right, absolutely. As soon as it gets low, low, and we don't have enough people anymore, we'll call the standby unit.
Which is why, if this is guaranteed, in essence, to be at that location all the time, that it has to be overtime personnel
Right.
because of our manning requirements that we have otherwise, which are not only, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not only the fact that it's good policy from a fire perspective, but isn't it also contractual as well? So we're obligated, under our contract, to have that manpower level at the station.
The reason for that is that OSHA requirements require that in order to make an interior attack on a fire, you have to have two in and two out. So the minimum that we could ever make to go inside a house is four. Therefore, we always keep four available, no matter what.
And the echo unit doesn't comply because there's only one?
And it can't transport.
All right.
From what Jordan shared with me, unless I'm mistaken, is it a basic life support? No, it's advanced life support, that's more than basic life support. All we need is a basic life support.
We don't have that.
We don't have any of those. All we have is advanced, which counts as a basic, but then some.
I mean, you just can't transport someone, but can that vehicle or staff prepare someone for...
Yes, absolutely. Yep, it has everything an ALS ambulance has, except the second paramedic and the structure.
I think that's really odd. We need to see someone that is able to hear someone, is it, that's good.
Well, then, we've got a possibility, that's awesome.
Contacting, verify.
Okay. We'll certainly do everything that we can to be of support, no doubt.
And as you said, with the echo unit, right now, that's used in the outline, four townships we have the agreement, but again, that's only during the week, so it would be available on the weekend. And like you said, with only one person, that, instead of being 1,300, you're talking about around 650.
Yeah, probably half that.
Yeah.
It would still have to be an overtime guy, because I can't call him back.
Right, that's right.
I guess my question is, does this, is your event going to make enough money to pay for the amount of, for the expense? You'll have enough money to pay for the expense of having somebody there?
We have no, we really imagine we don't get any.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's too hard to, no, you wouldn't have that in. It's all spectator.
Yeah, everything is big, spectators, and a lot of the aspect we go to, no one comes along. Basically, just the parents that are, have the races, are there.
How would you ever pay your share?
A lot of communities don't anything service.
Which was what he's asking.
We don't have that in the budget.
What he's asking us to do.
We just don't have it.
Do, um...
What do you do with that?
I was going to ask something about the echo unit. In the event that the echo unit fulfills his requirements, and we have that available on the weekend, do you, does the echo unit fall into the fee structure?
No.
For, what would you do? Because the 85 dollars an hour is a fee structure for the ambulance service to be at an event.
I would propose that we cut that in half, because that's based on two paramedics and an ambulance. But if it's on one paramedic and a similar to an ambulance, essentially, half would be fair.
And as fire chief, you would just have the authority to do that?
Yes.
You don't need action by us to do that.
It wouldn't take a formal action, but I would like your direction on how to handle this.
I would suggest that, it doesn't look like we're going to, I don't think there's a lot of support for the city to donate the entire service. I would suggest that we authorize the chief to make arrangements to help the teams support what they need, but under the circumstances of either an on-call that would require them to have to suspend the race until they return, or if the echo unit would work out at half the price, and they can get some community support to pay for that, or in the event that someone, you know, they get community support to pay for the whole thing. I would just give direction for the chief to handle that on, as a regular base, how you would any event, I guess.
That maybe will allow staff to work with Jordan and his organization to try to work out the fee structure that's acceptable.
I would second that.
Johnson?
Can I, can I just, here, for a minute? So we're not approving that the city pay for this?
Right.
Okay, then yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Ballagora?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Jordan. All right, last on the agenda is new business introduction of the water and sewer frequently asked questions. We added that to the agenda, I believe, and Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, but just wanted to make sure everyone was, that's in attendance, is aware that we have a frequently asked question and answer handout at the door, and will also be available on the website.
Yeah, our intent with this, they are available out there for the public, we'll also have any of the extras not taken down, probably on the reception counter where anybody can pick them up, but we will put this on our website hopefully tomorrow. And as other questions may come up, whether they're from council, citizens, if they haven't already been addressed and they're pertinent to the issue, we'll add them on to the webpage and put the date that, you know, we answered them, so they can see it's a new item. And we can also actually, on the hard copies that are down there, simply staple on the additional ones as well, so if somebody picks it up, it will, it will have those. But we tried to, from questions we have received from council, we saw some emails from the public, we tried to go through and also anticipate other questions, and things that have kind of just come up over time, and address them in. I know tonight it was brought up regarding, you know, a millage. We have addressed that, you know, it is, as far as we know, an option. There are pros and cons to that, certainly, to do that. I'm not sure on the millage, that would have to be approved by the voters, wouldn't it? So, you know, it is something that, you know, if the voters turn it down, there is no millage for that. But I'll let Rich kind of go through, probably the biggest question of, you know, why do we, are we asking for an increase?
You know, I certainly wasn't prepared to do a presentation, but the one thing I can say from just hearing the two folks that came up here talked about it, is there's a lot of bad information out there, because there were some statements made here that are completely contradictory to what the proposal is. The water rates that were proposed are $6.08.
Eight cents.
Six dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand. Sorry, I have to flip to it, because I don't want your site to argue. Six dollars and eight cents, six dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand gallons. Completely controllable by the consumer. They can, they can take steps to conserve that water as well possible. On top of that, there is a four-dollar per month billing charge. Before, we had a five-dollar and seventy-six cent service charge. So, I mean, we're basically offsetting that service charge that we had in place before with a four-dollar billing charge. And then we are implementing a ready-to-serv charge, which is basically, for a residential customer, it's based on their meter size, it's $10 per entity, $20 total per month. Excuse me, five dollars per month, per entity, $10 total per month. So, you know, and some statements were made, well, then on top of that, you're going to charge us $12 per thousand. No, that's not the case. It is $6.08 per thousand gallons for water, $6.63 per thousand gallons for sewer. Right now, residents are paying $4.18 per thousand for water, and $4.99 per thousand for sewer. So it is, yeah, it's an increase. It's a significant increase. The unfortunate thing is that we have, fortunate for our residents, we have had some of the lowest rates in the state of Michigan for water and sewer service. Past councils have prided themselves in keeping those water and sewer rates low to benefit the customer, to the detriment of the utility. We have not generated sufficient revenue to be able to adequately maintain the system. We're putting out the brush fires. We're taking care of the stuff that's supercritical, but we're not staying ahead of the game. That's, that's the problem that we've really seen. And quite frankly, the rate, the rates that we had to live with by the 35-year-old agreement with the township and the rate formula that was established in that agreement were, you know, they're paying $2.08 a thousand, and our citizens are paying $4.18 a thousand. They're paying, you know, similar in the sewer. And that revenue, that revenue stream was coming in, but, you know, at about half of what our citizens were paying. Now, in what we propose under this unified, and I, I don't know, I can't tell you if this unified system is going to move forward or not. If it doesn't move forward, there's going to be, there's going to have to look at different rates to be able to, for sustainability of our system. But, you know, the township consumer could actually see a slight decrease. They're already paying significantly more than our citizens in the city of Orpenar, but the township is buying it for a lot less than what our systems are. They're marking it up to cover their expenses. But we have not seen, we have not had the revenue stream be able to maintain our system. Good example, last year, Karen, every year she goes through this, and she says, you know, this is our fund balance, this is about what we've got that you can spend on capital, on maintenance activities, construction, replacement of, during our system. Million dollars. And that's gone down gradually. There used to be a time when I had 1.4, 1.6 million dollars that we could target towards replacements. Now it's down to about a million dollars. Last year, we got a very good price to replace, two blocks of Lake Street, $250,000, and that was a very good price. So at $250,000, and I've got not just the water and sewer collection and distribution system, I'm also going to take care of the plants, water and the wastewater plant, both, we've had a million dollars, and try to keep them running and running efficiently so that we can provide reliable service. What I've done, and this is in the handouts, and it's also, will be posted, the intention is, Greg said, you know, we wanted to get it in front of council first, and then we'll put it on the website. I want to get this information out to you. This was, you know, last Friday morning, I started cranking these off, and Greg came up at 3:00 AM, and he said, I think we ought to have this. I handed it to him, and said, there we go, we're pretty, on our way. So, you know...
And then we just marked it all up and...
Yeah, yeah, I would say Greg bled all over it, but he used blue ink, so I can't really say that. But we marked it up. You know, one of the things that is included in there is the impact to our citizens. You know, the minimum bill customer, and we picked some random numbers through there. It was a thousand, 2,000, 3,000 gallons per month. We did it in equivalent quarters, so that people could compare it to the bill that they had.
That's the spreadsheet that says, customer usage and cost comparison.
Contracted utility operations, about the four sheeting. And I will say, this spreadsheet was revised today, because I did find an error in my previous one, so I did adjust things up a little bit, but, you know, we have about, and I don't remember, Mike, do you remember how many minimum bill customers we had last time?
4,000.
About 25% of our residents are minimum bill customers. And of those, half of them are under 1,000 gallons a month in usage, okay? So before, they always paid for 6,000 gallons of water used. What we tried to do is, we brought that back down, so they're going to, they're going to pay for the actual volume of water and sewer needs to use. So right now, a person, a minimum bill customer who typically would use 1,000 gallons a month, would receive a bill of about $26, or would receive a bill of $26.71 a month. Equivalently, $80.13. And I believe that, you know, on the question and answer, the frequently asked questions, bottom of the first page, we go through what the minimum bill customer would pay. Before, they paid $60.78. Now they're going to pay equivalently over that three months, $80.13. It's about $6.45 a month more, 22 cents a day for a minimum bill customer. Somebody who, in the 6,000 gallon customer, you know, before they paid, you know, $60.78, but now, and fortunately, this is the way the math works out, but they're going to have a bill of about $118, equivalent bill of $118.26 per quarter. It's 19 dollars a month, for about 64 cents a day. You know, a 10,000 gallon customer, it's going to be about 80 cents a day, 23, you know, 23.88 more per month. One thing we're, we are shifting two monthly billings, for two reasons, for a couple of reasons. One, to try to make this a little more palatable. So, I mean, I know, and I'm above all those quantities I just stated, I use significantly more than that, but I know, you know, every, every three months, it's a pretty good bill that comes, miles that I have to pay, you know? And I guess I compare it to my cable, or my phone, or any of those, my gas bill, my electric bill, like a monthly, they don't seem quite as bad. So that was part of the rationale. We are going to a monthly billing cycle. You know, one of the other questions that we're stating is, you know, why has the city let our system degrade to this point? You know, we have stretched those down, we, you know, we tried to infuse it with... You know, we have stretched those down. We tried to infuse it with the state revolving loan funds here about five, six years ago. We did about $7 million worth of work. downside is with those loans, I've now got repayments. And those repayments, that debt that I have to pay, takes away from that available funding that we have for replacement throughout the system. You know, we identified, you know, these potential funding shortfalls back as far back as 1996. And we, you know, there was memos that were written at that point in time that we, we're going to have the shortfall. We need more funding. We need to raise rates. And we did. There was a couple of years where, you know, instead of a 2% or 3% mimic inflation, we did a 5% or 6% increase. It just wasn't enough. Here a few years ago, we did the state revolving loan fund. We did back-to-back 10% increases. Those 10% increases were only utilized to pay that, to try to pay that debt. And, you know, with businesses closing up, you know, water-intensive businesses, factories closing up, you know, consumers, the water loss or water usage has declined quite a bit over the past few years. We tracked that, so. Like I said, we have certainly tried to answer as many questions as we could. We don't have all, you know, there's going to be questions coming up from all over the board. And I don't want to get into the situation of, at my house, it's this. I, you know, answer this for my, I don't want to put those in there, but generic questions, general questions and answers. We are going to keep this as updated as we can and get it out there. Like I said, well, the frequently asked questions and the PowerPoint presentation that was presented at the joint meeting with Elkhino Township. I've made a few modifications to that. One of the things, you'll see it's on the back, if you go to the back page. Before, the two green blocks were not filled in. Basically, what we were looking for, looking at on that was what the increase was going to be to the city residents and what the impact was going to be to the township residents. The one thing that those two green blocks show, it's 100, that right now, we would, if we go to the $6.08 over the 2.906 for water that the township presently pays, if we go to the $6.63 over the 3.475 that the township presently pays us, it'd be about 109.2% increase in water and 90.8% increase in sewer revenue over what they're paying right now. So, I mean, that is, you know, the difference between their charging their customers and what we were required to sell through the agreement and the formula, which in our opinion, that agreement, 35 years, it expired 2,000 dollars, the formula along with it. So, that, now is our, I mean, I don't want to put this way, the agreement is done.
The key is there that 109, that 90%, that's revenue that would now come to the utility if it was a unified combined system. So, it would come in to the utility that would operate all of the water and sewer infrastructure that, between the two governmental or jurisdictional entities. So, that would add significant revenue. Right now, we get that lower amount, the balance is maintained by the township as part of what they use to maintain their existing rates. I think the other thing I would like to throw out, and the council could say what, you know, any input that they would like, is the direction this is going to go is unknown at this point in time. The township is having a public hearing, in essence, input on the 3rd of February, which is when this, our council meets as well. I think it starts at 6:00. And I don't know if at that meeting, they're going to make a decision as to whether they want to move forward in negotiating a unified system or not. If they, whatever decision they make is going to impact then what is ultimately presented to you. If they go with that unified system, obviously, we have to negotiate it and, you know, things may change here or there, and ultimately, you'll have to come back and be approved by both bodies. If they reject that, and we tend to basically operate as we are now, that they are a customer and we sell them at whatever rate, then we are, that is going to be a different scenario that we will have to bring before the council regarding not only city rates, but the rate that will be charged to the township as a commodity, I kind of, I guess I would say wholesale for them because then they mark it up, and that will be a different scenario. So, at this point, until we see what happens at the township on the 3rd, there is a, basically, a holding pattern to know exactly which direction we're going to be presenting, what format of a proposal we're going to be submitting to council. When we do it, we want to present it, but we also want to hold a public hearing so that everybody, whether they be a residential, commercial, industrial customer, can have their say, ask questions, and it will be a public hearing before council ever, you know, votes on the matter. But, first, we got to see which, what the township position is, and then, we know which way we need to go from there.
Okay. Rich, I appreciate it. And I don't want to get into a really long discussion, maybe we won't at all, about this. We did want to put out the frequently asked questions and answers, and there again, if the community has any that you'd like to add, contact Rich.
Yeah, or my son. You can email or call us. We'll take it down.
And I hope everybody at this point understands the magnitude of where we currently sit with our water and sewer system. We've been dealing with this since May of 2000, June of 2012, something like that. And then, so we had the study, when Zubik came in and gave the study. And if you can, if you can find that meeting, because I believe that we started YouTube before that meeting. If you can find that meeting, Greg mentioned that it might have been May of this past year.
Roughly May when...
When he came in and gave his presentation, and that gave us as council an understanding of where we sit with our current water and sewer system and the rates that we're charging. The five people sitting up here have absolutely no, no power whatsoever to have done something in the last 15 years to change the issue of where we're sitting. What we have the power to do is change what happens from now until whenever. I'm not going to sit here on a council and have five years from now wish that we'd have done something. Somebody else might. I don't. It's going to be unpopular. People are going to hate it. But if we were going to jump to any quick action to raise the rates like Zubik recommended, we'd have done it a long time ago. So, just the proof in the last six months should show that we are, we are committed to our residents and how it's going to impact them and their business. But at the end of the day, we're not going to kick the can down the street, at least which I don't think we are. We have to do something. We're doing our best to negotiate and partner with the township. It's working out well so far. We'll wait for their response. And until then, just bear with us until we make some decisions, but.
The only thing I was going to say is that, you know, timing is everything. Greg and I are going to be gone for the next two and a half days, and then I'm on, soon as we get back, I'm on vacation for two days. So, I guess email might be the better thing because I always, you know, the next two and a half days, I'll be checking my email, but I won't have access to, you know, maybe a message on my phone.
Right. And residents can certainly contact any of us as well.
We will give you...
With questions. We will give those questions to you rather than answer them.
Yes, and forward them to us via email. By email because it'll get to us quicker.
But if you can find, if you can find that meeting, and maybe in your frequently asked questions, put at the end maybe a click link to that YouTube for that May meeting that people can watch that and understand what we currently understand.
That study is on the city website.
It's on the city website, but listening to him, that is much easier than reading that.
I did ask this to come out tonight simply so people can start to understand. I'm a teacher. I tell my students, "I don't expect you to like public speaking. I don't expect you to like ratings. What I expect you to do is understand why that needs to be done." And Matt alluded to it. You know, we don't really want to raise the rates. It affects all of us as well. I'm a bottom-line person, and the bottom line is we take in less money than we spend on the system. We don't have the money to maintain it. We don't have the money to invest in it. Our permit is going to be up, I believe, at the end of next year. Part of that permit process forces communities to prove you have the money to invest in your system. And right now, I don't think we can do that. So, I think the question and the answer is at least an excellent start and an understanding why. I don't think any of us think it's going to be popular. It's not going to be popular in my house. I think we understand the comments that came in. So, it's important that we at least make sure the public understands the rationale for it and understands the need for it, and then we understand, you know, that it won't be popular. So, I would encourage people that it impacts, which is everybody, you know, to check out the questions, to go to the website, to certainly contact us. We want to make sure people know that there is a need for it before we really get caught up in the sticker shop of it all. So, the only reason I wanted that out there is so people were aware that there were some questions. And there are some good questions on here, by the way, that I think people have a right to know. So, it's a good, a good starting point to be sure. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
My pleasure.
That was it. Go ahead.
I'll move for your turn.
Second.
Please send in your minutes from the call session. The hard copy we gave them there in the lobby.
You are watching All About Elkhino.